The Plainville Board of Education. Preparing Students for Success in a Changing Global Society.
Good evening, everyone. It's time for us to start our meeting. It was a little after seven. We're sorry about the holdup. So if we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am. So I have a couple of special presentations I'd like to make this evening. I'll go up to the podium for that. So this is a little bit overdue, but back in mid-August, first of all, I apologize for being a little bit late. I was packing up my seventeen-page goal document, and it was a little heavy, so it took me a little longer to get in here. I just had a pre-meeting, but thank you for your patience. So back in August, I received notification in my office that Mr. Foster White received a distinction from CAPE, Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, and it reads, "Congratulations, you have earned CAPE's Certified Board of Education Member Designation. Very few other Connecticut Board of Education members have earned this prestigious honor. With your attendance at numerous CAPE caps conventions, CAPE workshops, and programs, and other events, you have acquired a wide variety of skills, knowledge, and abilities. This is a great accomplishment, and you are to be commended." So you earned twenty credits in the areas of board relations, policy, curriculum, school finance, school law, labor relations, and board operations. So they include a certificate. We just want to congratulate you formally. We wanted to do so at the last board meeting, but it slipped from the agenda somehow, so we want to take this opportunity to thank you for your dedication as a board member, for the extra training and work that you put into it. I know Becky earned this distinction years ago, and it's a lot of work, so congratulations on this very nice honor. You represent Plainville. Congratulations. Thanks again. We have, I was going to actually have several more. We had about five. I was going to play some makeup from September because the nominations came in, but a few of the nominees couldn't be here tonight. The two who are here are quite exceptional, so it just gave a little more time to celebrate them, so this is wonderful. Our first nominee as an everyday hero is Norma Olsen-Barley. Norma was nominated by Principal Lynn Legoyd, and I'll read what Principal Legoyd wrote about Norma. "Norma always goes above and beyond to make Tofflon School a great place for students and staff. It is always said that she has 'a heart of gold,' in quotes, and we see it daily. Whenever there is a project, we can count on Norma to step up and make it even better by offering to do the little things that make a big difference. At the start of this year, we came up with the idea of starting students back to school with an aloha theme, aloha welcome. Within hours, Norma secured palm trees, grass skirts, stuffed sharks, and all the other extras that made the first day memorable for students. Every year, Norma helps to organize our youngest students to present at the Veterans Day Program, which is coming up. She volunteers her time for every PTO event and often comes with her much-loved snow cone machine." We have to talk, Norma. Like a good snow cone. Parents from Norma's class constantly share stories of the impact Norma has made on their family. She's beloved by students and their parents alike. She serves as an unofficial photographer for every event, generously sharing her time in photos with all of us. She's an ambassador of Tofflon, welcoming families and creating an immediate connection to all. During the summer, when Norma heard that we were pulling together a few summer reading nights at the library, Norma attended along with other teachers. The children were so excited to see their teachers at the library in the summer, and I was happy to see Norma there as well, and she was taking my picture, by the way. Well, beyond that, Norma extended the gardening theme by giving each child a tiny little plant to adopt. She then followed up with giving the plants to the teachers on the first day. Perfectly named, the plant is called Mother of Thousands, and that's what Norma is to the Tofflon community. So it's my pleasure to extend an Everyday Hero Award on behalf of Plainville Community Schools, as written by Principal Lynn Legoyd, to Norma Olsen-Barley.
It's a bit unusual, but I did nominate the next everyday hero, and it's Lynn Legoyd. So I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge Mrs. Lynn Legoyd, Principal of Tofflon Elementary School, for her outstanding commitment and abilities as a principal. More importantly, I want to acknowledge Principal Legoyd's exemplary acts of humanity and kindness that have created, helped to create such a positive and caring environment at Tofflon Elementary School. Mrs. Legoyd is a highly talented school leader and a person whom the students, staff, and families of Tofflon School can count on to be kind, caring, and professional in every way. She's a true instructional leader who spends time providing individual and group support and skilled guidance to her team. Importantly, she models the teaching qualities she knows will yield the greatest results. As a principal, Mrs. Legoyd is proud to have earned impressive improvement in state test scores across many of her grade levels and classrooms, resulting in Tofflon being named as a school of distinction. Mrs. Legoyd continues to work in a focused way to move her students even higher up the ladder of success while also sharing her talents and steps to success with the district team, which is important as a PLC community. Our newly-formed principal PLC continues to learn and grow together, as PLCs do, and Lynn is a leader in our group. What makes Lynn even more impressive is her kindness and her general sense of goodness. A few weeks ago, we were extremely sad to mourn the loss of a student from Tofflon, Axel Ulette, a fifth-grade Tofflon student who fought along in brave battle. It was a very sad time for all of Plainville, and especially for Tofflon. Mrs. Legoyd's ability to support her students and staff, to orchestrate meaningful systems of care for her building, to tactfully and meaningfully plan a Tofflon Flag Ceremony and offer such wonderful words of support and encouragement demonstrated that Lynn has a gift. At the Flag Ceremony, Principal Legoyd shared a powerful message of strength and hope to her fifth graders, their families, and staff in attendance. Despite the fifth-grade bus coming back late from a field trip that day, and Lynn having to make several adjustments on the fly while holding it all together, she remained poised and calm and ensured that the ceremony was extremely meaningful and a heartfelt celebration of life and of some of Axel's most positive qualities that others should exhibit, including kindness to others and keeping a sense of humor. Lynn, you certainly exhibit the trait of kindness in so many ways, and you definitely have a better sense of humor than just about anyone I know, especially any principal I know. And that's no offense to Carl, Matt, Andrew, or Phil, but I think they'd all agree you could do stand-up comedy. So if this doesn't work out, you'll get sick of us. There's always that. Principal Legoyd, I want to thank you and recognize you as an everyday hero for all the seemingly small and many not-so-small efforts and actions you've taken this year and will continue to take to ensure that Tofflon and our district team continues to excel in all ways, academically and as a caring, welcoming, and supportive place where students learn and excel and where teachers feel valued and supported. Thank you.
Moving on, may I get approval of the minutes, please? May I get a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second to motion.
Any concerns, questions? Motion carries. Next, we have citizens' comments. Kathy, Mrs. Paglisi couldn't be here tonight, but I do have something she sent me through email. The governor's office recently announced that the town was awarded a 1.5 million grant to make improvements to eighty senior housing units managed by the Plainville Housing Authority, and the improvements would in, oops, the improvements would involve all the units in the Centerview Village and Woodmere Manor complexes. The grant would be used to replace existing bathtubs with a walk-in shower and make ADA improvements to five kitchen, kitchens, sorry. So that's a big deal for these seniors, and they're very happy about all of this because some of them do have a very hard time trying to get into their own tubs, and the renovations would be awesome for them. I've been in those apartments, and some of them do need renovation. The next thing she said was, "The Department of Transportation Property Acquisition for Tomlinson Avenue Bridge. The town is moving closer to replacing the Tomlinson Avenue Bridge over the Quinnipiac River. The town staff is anticipating that the replacement could occur next summer. As part of that project, the state DOT would like to acquire from the town a small parcel of land. This parcel is located to the north of Tomlinson and includes a portion of the river as well. The proposed acquisition totals four hundred and two square feet." And then, "For Robertson Airport Runway Repair, a recent inspection of the Robertson Airport Runway revealed cracks that have developed in the pavement. Many of the cracks were occurring along the cold joints between the sections of pavement and are considered normal wear and tear. These run basically the length of the runway. There were also several larger cracks that run across the runway that would appear to be located above, over underground utilities. And after last meeting in September, the Aviation Commission reviewed the issue with the runway, and they unanimously recommended that the cracks be repaired before the winter months to avoid potential damage from water and getting under the pavement." And that's all I have from Kathy. Superintendent's report?
Madam Chair, I would like to, if I could, I apologize for the omission of the CAPE awards in the opening section. I had a little confusion there, so I'd like to mention those, and then I'll go into the superintendent's report, if that's all right.
That's fine.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge, first of all, Lynn Davis, who puts a tremendous amount of work into putting together all the paperwork and all the submissions for the CAPE Communications Awards every year. She does a tremendous job of really highlighting and acknowledging the amazing programs that we have across Plainville. It's not just through the CAPE Recognition Awards, but through everything she does all the time, through the media and every other outlet that she uses to promote what's going on and what's going well in Plainville. So thank you to Lynn Davis for that tremendous work. We had several recognitions from this latest round of CAPE entries, so I'll just go through and read those to you now. We received notification of several CAPE Bonnie B. Carney Awards of Excellence as a result of submission package from Lynn Davis on behalf of Plainville Community Schools this year and representing our Board of Education. Among the awards received are Course Selection Guide category, first place for Adult and Continuing Education Program Guide. Anybody that's seen our Adult and Continuing Education Guide has to be impressed, it's incredible, so professionally done. Special Project category, first place, Plainville Plate Cookbook, Adult and Continuing Education. I received a copy of this, and I'm pretty excited to try out some of the recipes. The members of the Adult and Continuing Education put together a cookbook of authentic meals that, from their culture, and this cookbook is a nice cross-representation of cultures and diversity, and some wonderful meals that are in there, so that was a nice, unique project. Also, a Special Project AV category, honorable mention, Plainville High School Intro Video for Incoming Freshman Class of 2022, which was an outstanding video that was put together. I believe that was the one that was, was that the one done by Mr. St. Lawrence? Yes, he did it twice, so I didn't want to make sure I didn't leave that out. Very talented current senior student. In addition, we received first-place awards in Going Green Essay category, which is outstanding, and for the District's Business Brief Annual Report. So congratulations to Lynn Davis. Did I leave anyone out, Ms. Davis? You can tell me if I did. Thank goodness. I'm on a roll tonight. I appreciate it very much. And congratulations to our Board of Education, and thank you, Lynn Davis. And at this time, we'll begin our special, our presentation on school safety and security. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you about safety and security in Plainville Safety and security of our school district has to be our top priority. There's nothing that's more important than ensuring our students and our staff and faculty are safe, feel comfortable in their buildings as a part of that school climate, physically secure, physically safe, but also mentally and emotionally safe as well. So the presentation tonight will touch on a lot of the things being done across the district to support safety, both physical, emotional, and mental feeling of comfort in our school climate. I do a full school climate report in June, which will be David, Mr. Levin Dusky's presentation this coming June, however, this touches upon that, there's a bit of an overlap, and there has to be. So, as you're aware, every November, by every November first, I must submit a school safety plan for each school and a district safety plan for the district to EDMS, Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. That has to be submitted by November first. I attend all the meetings with that group of district security folks, and our region of the state is always 100% getting those in on time. Some aren't, which is a little bit scary to say, but they have to be redone every year. Our plans are current and being improved through the use of Navigate Prepared, which is a program I'll tell you about, and you've heard about, and you've read about in the papers. I've done a couple of short spotlights. I'll tell you more about that later. Each year also, we have a Safe School Climate Plan that's developed by representatives from each school, which was led by me in the past, will be led by Mr. Levin Dusky going forward. Where you meet, you look at survey data and information about the needs of your school community and your school climate, and based on that, you plan, you put together a Safe School Climate Plan to address the climate needs of your schools and as a district. So again, we use survey data, we look at things like mental health support, suicide prevention, other topics that have become prevalent, if you're looking at the media and what's going on in our schools today, as well as bullying prevention and other measures like that. There are many, many components of school safety and security. I'll go through a few here, and forgive me reading, but they're all important. Secure buildings and entryways. We do a really good job in Plainville of securing our buildings and entryways. I was really surprised at a recent conference, speaking with superintendents, that said they just started locking some of their doors just in the past couple of years. You know, we've been doing that for many, many years in Plainville, and it's another part of the state, another part of the country, I'm sorry. But things have changed. There used to be open doors in schools, you walked in, and no one thought twice about it, but we all know why that can no longer happen. So we spend a lot of time, effort, money, and focus on securing our buildings and entryways. We use video intercom entry systems. For all of you that have come to our schools during the day, you know that you're looked at through a video, and you're buzzed into the building by trained office professionals. We use, once you're in the building, in the main office, you, if you're going to go into the actual school building, we're using a Raptor visitor screening system. Been a couple of years with that system and training all of our staff to use it, where you enter, you put your license or an approved ID into a little machine that then checks it, verifies it against federal and state records to make sure there's no concerning crimes that should disallow you from going into the building or going into the building without a guided escort, depending on what the situation may be. It prints out a badge with your, the time and your picture, so that's another system that we use for security. Cameras and recording systems throughout the district, most prevalent here at the high school, at the middle school, all the elementary schools have them, but we're working to build up the camera systems at each school so we have better access to monitoring, and it's also a nice deterrent to misbehavior. You know, that's, it's an added benefit, and you can go back and look at the cameras and try to figure out what might have happened in the situation, but having cameras is essential so you don't have blind spots in your building where things could happen that you're not aware of if there's, it doesn't have to be, happen to be a teacher in that hallway or stairwell or area. And also, when you're, if there were to be an event, you need to be able to access those cameras, and I'll talk about that more later, so you know what's going on in the building. Our police do have access to our cameras currently. They can pull up the cameras at any time on their vehicles, on their laptops, at dispatch, so if they want to look and see if they get a call, and they can go into the system that we currently have, the name's escaping me, Kevin? Milestone, thank you, but it's going to be even better soon. Building lockdown systems are in place. We have actual locking mechanisms that are triggered by a push button that are in designated locations that are not disclosed to the public, so if we need to use those in the event of a lockdown, they lock down all the doorways to all the main hallways and secure our buildings, among other things. New hardware and software systems that I'm going to talk to you about in a little bit. Planning and design of a new secure PHS entryway. Mr. Bustle's going to talk to you about that on the next slide. This is something that we had design and building of an entryway in our budget, but because of reductions, right now, we have, we were able to get the architectural design approved, and we're working on building in the actual construction of it, hopefully into the next budget cycle. So, Mr. Bustle, if you could just explain a little bit of this really detailed schematic.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me today. This diagram up here, you can see the existing high school entrance as it is, and to the right would be the new modified entrance. I can use my little cursor here. So on the, on the new entrance, people would be buzzed in to this door over here, like they do now. The doors on the inside would be locked like they are at the other elementary schools, so you can't just go into the building. You would have to walk into this new door they will put in that goes into this, the old vault area, which is no longer being used. That will then guide the people right into the office area where they can sign in, use the Raptor system, and be either escorted to where they need to go or wait for someone to come pick them up. Well, now that the high school is getting looked at, we should have these documents ready to go out to bid within a month or so. I'm having them put together a cost estimate for us so we have an idea of what this is going to run us before we go out to bid, because we'll have to budget for it and then go out to bid. With Linden being done two summers ago, though, this will be four of the five schools that have a secure entrance. The middle school is a little more challenging, and we'll probably have to wait until we do the renovation on that in a few years. Wheeler is also getting child guard glass installed on them, as we're looking into possibly modifying some of the other glass in the other schools with ballistic film, not quite as good as child guard or school guard glass, but it is a deterrent. We also are putting in a web-based intrusion alarm, or your burglar alarm. Right now, it's, it's very difficult to add and take people off of it, so this web-based system will give me access to be able to, when people retire or we have new hires and I need to put somebody on to arm or disarm the building, I can do it myself instead of calling in a third party and having to wait a week or two. Lastly, we're working on installing some flashing lights outside the main entrances and the visitor entrances so that people are aware when we're in a lockdown. And with that, we'll also be able to hand out some access cards to the police officers so that when the building is in lockdown, I can program a special time schedule for them where they'll still be able to get into the building. This way, they don't have to go to the lockbox, get the key to get into the building, they can go right into the building. So that's my quick update. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last feature was something that Chief Kattany and I talked about. He said, "Is there any way we can get those fobs that we use to buzz into the building?" A lot of, you know, I just have this little plastic fob that's programmed to me specifically, you know, with 24-hour access so that it could come to any, any of the doors that have fob entry, and the one barrier to that was that when, when the building's in a lockdown mode and the lockdown button's pressed, it, there's an automatic shut-off, but through the, through the lights being outside and letting, say, our maintainers are coming from school to school, and they're, they've taught, they've been taught to use the key, but if, so they would go into a building and maybe not realize if they're not using fobs, so the light would help to show them that the building's in lockdown, and also for visitors that, you know, parents would know that the building's in a lockdown, and there'll be more training on what they should do as well coming forward. So thanks to Mr. Bustle for all his efforts on working on the secure vestibule. So other safety components, some of these are more people and personnel-related. The SRO at Plainville High School surveys have shown, you know, thanks to the Board of Education's support of that, and the town council and that collaboration, shared services model, you know, we're able to really do some good things. So the SRO has been a big one. So the SRO's been a big win for the district. Officer Martins is terrific, and she does so much other than just, you know, police the halls, she's a true SRO, and it's paying off. Security guards here at the high school, we have two, one also does residency investigations for the district as well. Vigilant faculty and staff, you know, they're all trained and vigilant at all times, and we're doing more and more of that, through things like Alice training, and through the other training that will be coming up that I'll tell you about. Training in drills, staff and students, last year, Alice for both of them, as well as our regular, you know, fire drills every month, two in the first month, three safety drills that are required by state law each year in each school. Technology monitoring tools, Mr. Ross has been really good about vetting which are the best tools for really keeping track of what students in, you know, potentially staff are using their technology for, so there are kind of key buzzwords that technology screens for, and if it's very concerning, or self-harm or harm to others, then using district technology, we'll get alerts, and the principals act on that very quickly. And we've been able to intervene in some potentially concerning situations. Positive relationship with our police department, I can't say enough about, and our fire marshal, I can't say enough about Chief Katania and the whole police department, we work really well together, they're great to work with, all of them, Rich Markey, Jess Martins, and the whole force. And of course, Fire Marshal Larry Sutherland's a terrific guy, and he's a stickler for the rules, but he does a great job in keeping us on track, and keeping everybody safe. Grant-writing efforts, I wrote there, some have been successful, Community Foundation of Greater New Britain, I wrote a grant prior to last year, I believe it's prior to last year, and we received a grant for cameras that were installed by Kevin Ross and his team, it saved us a lot of money. He gets the cameras at a really good price, and then they install them themselves, do all the technology behind that, so it's really helpful to have people like Kevin and his staff here, so we don't have to pay outside vendors most of the time. I applied for the state grant, along with a lot of help from Steve Bustle, Kevin Ross, Dr. Brown, when she was here, you know, it was a team effort, and spent, I would say, a good 30 or so hours writing those grants twice, and unfortunately, didn't get any money from that. The first round of that grant, we did get a decent amount of money, so there's different, there are different iterations of the grant that came out, so we only got the first one. But anyway, it's always worth trying for extra money. I just wrote another $5,000 grant for the high school, from Community Foundation, again, we were invited to do so, so we're looking for more supplies for their Go Bags, which are the bags in every classroom to use in an event. I was recommended to add to those bags by SRO Martins, actually, so the trauma kits and things like that, that just in case, that you need to have in place, as well as more cameras for the high school, so I just actually submitted that grant tonight before our meeting. Increased mental health supports, we're constantly looking how we can do a better job of supporting our students' mental health and well-being through different programs, I'll tell you about a couple later. Social and emotional learning, we have a team of about 22 going to Yale on Thursday and Friday this week for a full-day training. Principals, head teachers, school counselors, a really dynamic group who really are invested in that social and emotional learning side of the importance of developing the whole student, and supporting the whole student, but also the whole educator and administrator, because everybody in this room has feelings and emotions, and if you don't control them, they control you, and you make really bad decisions when they control you. So, this program is really about recognizing, understanding, labeling, and the way we regulate our emotions, and how important that is. So we're looking forward to bringing that work back to the district, first with all of our staff throughout this year, and subsequent trainings in November PD Day, and throughout the year, and then with all of our students for the following year. And we get tremendous support from stakeholder groups, especially Plainville Coalition for Positive Youth Development, Lynn Davis also happens to be a co-chair of that with Roberta Brown, and tremendous work there. Healthy Plainville, there's a lot of groups that really support wellness and the big picture. So when it comes to securing our schools, and making our students and staff feel safe, there are several steps that are being put into place, and it's taken some time, more time than I had hoped for, in setting some of these programs up, but there's a lot involved. So we're at the point now, we're gonna start more extensive staff training at each of the schools, and really rolling these out till full implementation is in place this So you see here Navigate Prepared, I mentioned that earlier, Mutual Link is another product we're using, and I'm excited about, and then finally, the bottom picture there with the cellphone is called Rave, it's a panic button application for mobile devices. So Navigate Prepared, this is taking, honestly, it's taken quite a bit of time to set up. Last year, they came in and did 360-degree renderings, pictures, actually, high-definition pictures of every space in the district. Anywhere you can stand up, there's a 360-degree picture, and it's accessible on the Navigate Prepared app for anybody who has access, there's different levels of access, so police and first responders would have all the access, building principals and administrators would have all the access, but then the levels of access decrease, you know, throughout the organization. I keep hitting that by accident. We have, it includes web-based, web-based school safety plans, as I mentioned, we have to submit new safety plans every November to the state, to Demus. Electronic flip charts that are a quick go-to, on a phone, on a computer, on a Chromebook, accessible to see, what do I do if there's an earthquake, or what do I do if there's, you know, power outage? You can easily look, and it gives you a play-by-play, specific to Plainville, that's been tailored by our administrative team. Secure text communication between the principal and staff, not over the PA, this is one of my, what I believe is one of the biggest advantages of the system, so if a lock, if the school's in a lockdown situation, or even if it's a code yellow and there's a medical emergency, and staff may want more information, or the principal wants to share a little more information, if it's an extended code yellow perhaps, but especially in a code red, when there may be a little panic with the absence of communication, there starts to become panic, and then students start to text their families, and then people start to show up, and it starts to spiral when it may not be anything of that nature. So this provides opportunity to really be more specific between the principal, or the incident commander, could be the assistant principal, sharing information about what's going on, and what precautions and actions to take, sometimes specific to an area of the building that goes along with the Alice training that we had last year. So, it's a really great feature of this product. The attendance system, I also like very much, it's linked to our Power School Student Information System, so instead of manually going into your gradebook and then having to call, or send an email to the principal saying, "I have so-so, so-and-so," or getting on, having some, if you don't have a radio, teachers don't have radios, two-way radios, it becomes very cumbersome to know who's in your building and who's not in your building. Through this system, it automatically, it's all linked to Power School, it sends one report, it'll say, for the high school, 701 students, you know, missing at first, you know, zero count of four, and then it, as the enrollment, as the teachers enter their attendance, it populates it, and you, all of a sudden, you have no students missing, or one student missing, and you get on the radio, where's so-and-so, can't find them, they're not accounted for in the system, and you can find them quickly. So, that's another feature. Access to, like I said, 360-degree building maps, to respond if there were ever an incident. Scheduling of drills, those aren't live photos, it's just a photograph of, you know, the building last year when they took them, and Wheeler will be done this year when it's completed. Scheduling of drills through the system, it's all done through the system, you log all your drills in the system, we report to the state through the system, so it's used in many parts of the state, we're the first district in Connecticut to have it. It was something, we became aware of through a national superintendent conference, but it's used a lot of places. Mutual Link is another product that, when we were looking at Navigate, and what it was missing, this has all the things that Navigate didn't have, so this has an interoperability communication piece, and it's a long term, but basically, this came about as a result of 9/11, when there are dozens, if not more, different fire departments, police departments, trying to communicate with one another and figure out who's doing what and where, and it was chaos, because there was not that opportunity. So this company developed a technology that's pretty incredible, that pulls any type of communication, whether it's two-way radios, camera systems, telephone systems, all into one site command, so it goes to dispatch at the police department, and we'd have access here with the principals at each of our schools. Through a discussion, negotiation I had over the summer with the company, this is a very common product around the country, we're the first district in Connecticut to have this product as well, but it's, we're getting it free for five years, it's gonna be funded through a grant, and they wrote in the contract that we'll get it anyway, even if the grant doesn't come through, and the police department, because they're in the area of a community college, are gonna get it free for nine years. So that's another, I'm having a lot of difficulty tonight with this keyboard. That's another benefit of this product, it's gonna be, initially, the startup cost of all the equipment is over $180,000, all the materials and the technology that they have to set up. We went around to each of the schools, it's already installed at the police department at this point. I met with the chief and the Mutual Link team over the summer, it's all installed over there, thanks to Kevin and his support with their team, and it's gonna be installed at each of the schools within the next, hopefully within the next month. Lots of research, lots of planning, lots of speaking with other districts, and it's in all the state colleges now in Connecticut, and all the community colleges, and all the police departments in those communities as well. So it's a bridge for communication. It also includes what I showed you with the cellphone app, the Rave Communication Panic Button. So what that is, I'll have Kevin talk about what geofencing is on the next slide, but it basically provides a way for quicker, quicker ability for a teacher to create an alert, and to notify everyone in the building who has that app. It also integrates the cameras to inform the police, so if a code is, if an alarm is pressed, and Kevin could do it now, but he probably, he's probably doing it right now. Kevin and I both have it on our phones, and even if it's in silent mode, it'll still ring, if it's not on your person. So, it'll, so you'll get that, and you'll get a text message and an email saying what's going on, and it says, "Unknown incident reported by PHS, at PHS by K. Ross." So it'll tell you quite a bit of information, depending on what the incident is too. But that would trigger me to go into lockdown, until I know what's going on, lock the doors, you know, I don't have to wait for the principal to be called, to then make an announcement, whether through Navigate, or through, well, they do it over the PA for a code red, but immediately, someone's concerned enough to press that, that's like pressing, that's like calling 911, because that's what it does. So, a little more about the Rave Panic Button that Kevin just demonstrated with me. There is an active shooter or an active intruder button, which is the obvious one at the top. Some of the concerns are, you know, what happens if you have a, like a false press, you know, I call people by accident all the time with my phone in my pocket, and have to apologize. For this, you have to hold it down for a second and a half, you'll see a little wand, it kind of sweeps, does a complete loop, and then another button comes up that's not right in the center, in different locations that ask you, "Do you want to call down 911, yes or no?" So you'd press yes if there were an incident. If you pressed, pressed and held it down by accident for a second and a half, you would just press no. So you have access on any cellphone, I can't require all staff to have it, because I would have to provide them with a cellphone from the district. I can strongly encourage them to do so, and from my experience in talking to the company for other parts of the state, if staff members have access to something like this, they typically want to have it, there's no cost to them at all, it's just like having a, you know, Words With Friends app on your phone, but it's obviously a much more serious thing. So it's treated like a 911 call, so everybody has to be trained that way, you don't press it and hold it down unless you have an actual concern, but there are other features of it as well, so if there is something breaking out, breaking out in an area building or a concern, there's that button at the bottom where you just need staff support, so if a fight may be developing, or kids are arguing, or someone's vaping or doing something they shouldn't be doing, you can also alert, you know, through that, so it's not all calling 911, that wouldn't call 911, that would just alert certain people in your building. So I'm spending a lot of time on these, but I think it's important to understand what they do. This would also activate the building lockdown systems, so those actual physical systems that shut all the doors, so through pressing that button, for certain ones, like an active intruder, it would activate that, without having to go to the locations where those buttons are, and pressing them, or calling and having someone press them. It will, it will trigger that alarm through some creative work that Kevin and the tech support from this company, from Mutual Link, were able to make happen. Kevin, you want to talk quickly about geofencing? This is a geofence of, looks like Plainville High School.
Yeah, so, sorry. The app works in a way that it tries to determine where you are based on your location of your smartphone. As you can see here, we have the outline of the property for the high school, you also notice there's red lines around other portions of the building. If you were to press, like I did there, it saw that I was in the high school. If I was at the football field, it would've said I was at the football field. Tries to give some feedback to where these locations are happening. Each campus was set up with a geofence, we did like the parking lots, and the playground areas, and we did the schools, and we're gonna see how these maps work for now and move Some of the other things with the Mutual Link, it'll integrate into our cameras, and our phone systems, and our radio systems as well, so that the dispatch have access, if there's something going on in a building, they have access right into the building through basically little units we have to put at each location. And basically, you know, working with the company, you know, they're saying how, basically, this is gonna move forward pretty easily here, and I gotta thank the board and everyone for supporting the technology, because we, if we didn't have the infrastructure that we had in place already, many things would have to happen as well to make this happen. And so, because we've been supporting and maintaining it, we continue to be able to move forward easily with different processes like this, so.
Thanks, Kevin. So having Kevin and Steve on the team are absolutely vital assets. So a lot of things are going on with school safety and physical safety, and ensuring that we have our buildings in as prepared as possible for any potential incident, and we hope we never have to use those systems other than to practice and do drills and rehearse. But our hope is that we'll be ready for whatever we need to be ready for. So an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, an old Benjamin Franklin edge. So threat assessment systems are in place across the district, and we continue to work to improve those. Every day, I receive a new email from a company trying to sell threat assessment products, and it's kind of the buzzword of the day, just kind of predetermining threats before they become threats, and it's work that we do in our schools all the time, through our intervention systems and supports. Student assistant miles in each of our schools, and the teams that work with kids directly are always looking for kind of concerns, and monitoring our students and getting them the supports that they need. Our intervention systems are critical, and we continue to try to improve those, it's an area that we, that we know we have to do, continue to work on. Positive behavior interventions and supports, especially at the secondary level, is something that was noted in the NIESC self-study report, and the NIESC visit, I should say, the pre-visit. So it's work that's being done, and it's being addressed. The Go Guardian system for monitoring potential threats to cell for others, that's what I mentioned earlier, that Mr. Ross brought to the district for district technology, and we have been able to prevent some possible concerns through use of that system, and to talk to kids and get them help that they need. Mental health supports and improvements to services, again, it's something that we're constantly striving to do better, and I'll tell you a couple really quick things at the bottom of this slide. Mobile crisis is used whenever we need it, if someone's in crisis, believe it or not, that happens more often than we would like. Students have, there's an increased amount of anxiety and depression, and other things that are plaguing students in the modern world, and, you know, at the school, we're in a place where we can help students to get the support they need, so we use things like mobile crisis and 211 to get those supports, and that's partially United Way-funded, which I know we give support to United Way as a district. Sandy Hook Promise, this is also grant-funded, I worked on this over the summer with a representative from Sandy Hook, starting last spring, and I want to thank our principals, Mr. Guarino and Mr. Johnson. These programs are geared for, especially the last two, but really, all three are geared for entry-level, to middle and high school level. So, we had our conference call, coordinating call with the principals, administrators, and myself, and the representative from Sandy Hook Promise, and it was gonna... And there's gonna, going to be planned assemblies coming up for each of these programs, kind of, not all at once, but staggered throughout the year and start of next year. And it's gonna start with, start with hello, and then say something, and then signs of suicide. You know, it's, it's a sad reality of the world, but we have to be prepared to help kids to feel better about where they are and that there's support and there's help and there's, there's another way. So all of these programs are geared to helping students to feel more a part of, for say, start with hello, removing that isolation piece that often leads to, you know, behaviors we don't want to see, that we don't want in our community. So not isolating students, but making them feel welcomed. You know, we've brought in programs in the past, ADL and Rachel's Challenge that had some of that focus to it. But this is another extension of that. And there's, there's a whole program that goes with it. Say Something is training students to look for warning signs of someone at risk or hurting themselves or others and to say something to a trusted adult before a tragedy occurs. And then Signs of Suicide is an education program for teachers. The teachers students to recognize the symptoms of depression and suicide. And it also provides mental health assessment and screens every student for depression and suicide. And the program also includes training and educational materials for faculty, staff and parents. And that's important for parents as well. So each of these clubs at each school require what's called the SAVE, S-A-V-E, it's an acronym, Save Promise Club. It doesn't have to be a new club with a new advisor, it can be, it can be connected to another club that you already have existing, so like Interact or Student Council. So that's what the principals are looking to do. Because that's where you get the ongoing piece, where just, it's not a one and done assembly. So needs for moving forward, and then I'll sit down. Use of program supports and services, obviously with fidelity, we want to use what we have and use it well as it's meant to be used. So that requires regular training and use of protocols, which we do and we'll just continue to do better, especially with our new tools that we have at our disposal. Use of data from surveys to determine school needs. Increased alignment of supports across our schools, so that we're, we have a common approach to addressing issues and concerns. Consider our needs at PHS, as I mentioned, for NIESC with improving our, especially tier-two interventions for students with, with needs. Continue to build parent understanding of services and family expectations. I'll, I'll make it a point to do that along with our principals. I'm raising this now, because as we approached, you know, the start of budget development, you know, the MSP entryway, I know was raised by Mr. Bustle earlier and, you know, we've talked about waiting to the, to the, you know, till we do the renovation at the middle school, that's not gonna be for a few years, based on, I forget what the actual year is, when we're, 22, so a couple of years. So in the meantime, I may be proposing something in our budget to help to mitigate any, any concerns. Right now, it's staffed by vigilant office professionals and Mr. LaSueur and a combination of, of those things, but we may look to do something with perhaps additional security staff for the middle school. So that's the safety and security presentation. I know it's a lot. I think it's important that you and the community know all the steps that are taken. We don't take safety and security lightly. We put a lot of time, a lot of time and effort and thought and into it, so. Any questions?
I just have a comment.
Yes.
The texting feature that you were talking about, how the principals can send out a text to the teachers and let them know what's going on. My sister works in a school system in New York and they were on a lockdown a couple weeks ago that was not planned. And my sister said that she just sat in her classroom and texted with the other teachers wondering what was going on. And she actually said to me, this is how I thought I was going to die, because she didn't know what was happening. And she found out because there was somebody in the hallway that had a walkie-talkie and she heard that the police were chasing somebody outside and that's why they locked the school down, but she had no idea. So to be able to communicate with the teachers and put them at ease or let them know what they need to do is really important.
Right, and there's a lot of, that's the problem, there's not communication, there's miscommunication and misinformation. And that spirals really quickly in a crisis, because people want answers and then they, they tend to fill in the blanks. And then that becomes distorted and it's shared, so it's that, what's that called? Telephone game, but it's, yeah, so, exactly. And for that product, it doesn't have to be on a cellphone, they can send messages to the computers as well. So it doesn't have to be a text message if they don't want to use a cellphone, that'll be for everybody with a laptop, a Chromebook. You know, we've talked about potential of having substitute teachers have, have access to a Chromebook, so those are all things we have to plan for, but, you know, so everybody in the building will have access to know what to do and how to know what's going on and what to do in any situation. So that's the goal.
I have a comment as well. Just wanted to thank Steve and Kevin for all that they do for the safety for our schools and for our children and everybody that participates in it, because without group effort, it really wouldn't get done and we wouldn't know what we need. So thank you to all who do this for the school system.
And thank you, I appreciate that, but I, I also want to say it's, it's really a team effort and, for instance, the Navigate Prepared product, every principal had to spend numerous, countless hours entering their school safety plan into that and then we had some little issues, so we had to redo some of it, but it's a lot of time by, especially the administrat, the whole administration, but thank you. It's, it's definitely, it's important work and we all take it very seriously.
We do, and thank you.
A couple of questions, Steve. The Sandy Hook Promise piece that I hear, that's really secondary level, it's not something that's used at the elementary level, is that, is that the case?
For these programs, there was mentioned that you could do, start with hello at the primary level. The recommendation was that we, we have a team at least from the middle and high school and we can certainly look to that as an expansion, because I think that's where, that's where learning starts and, but I, it's also where I see it most naturally. I mean, there are, there are counterexamples to that, but when I'm out there visiting classrooms, I see kids being nice to each other and helping each other and when they're, when they're young, it's like my little six-year-old daughter, it just, it seems like, most of the kids are pretty nice to each other most of the time. So it's really, the goal of those programs is to remove isolation that may have developed over the years in school and to, to welcome new people into your, your, kind of your peer group, social group. But yes, it's a good, it's a good question.
So my other thought, because this is a lot of information, and I know we tried this last year, we had a safety forum, very sparsely attended unfortunately, a lot of good information, a lot of effort went into that, but I don't know if it's something that we try again and see if parents are interested in coming in and learning a little more about, not necessarily just this process, but about, you know, other aspects as we tried to do last time, but this is a lot of new information as well.
It is. I would be certainly willing to entertain that. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with all of the, I have a meeting with the chief, all the principals. They have to sign off on our safety plans and tomorrow's actually the meeting to do that, so we'll also plan some district, district drills and tabletop exercises, that's what they call them, but I can, I can definitely talk to the chief and, you know, if we're to do, whether it's a videotaped presentation we put on our website, something like that, where you can access it on your calendar, that might be more, more suited to busy families, we can, we could try that. Yeah, where there's a will, there's a way, but I think it's important to get the information out there and people, our families having access to it, so, thank you.
And then lastly, I would just say that, you know, it's, it's difficult to sit here and have to invest this much time into this concept, but at the same time, if we don't have this concept, we have nothing else. So it's always safety first and that's what we have to do.
Yeah, as I, as I started with, it's our top priority and it's sad that it has to be our top priority. We want student learning and well-being and, you know, developing of productive citizens to, to make our world a better place as our top priority, but, you know, I would say they're equally top priorities, but safety has to be first. So there's the business, there's the operations and management side of running a school district and there's the learning, teaching, learning and curriculum and the, the important things that happen in the classroom. We have to, there's just, it's just, there's a lot on the plate, you have to do it all, but we won't, we won't sacrifice one and, for the other, we'll do it all, but it's just, you're right, it's unfortunate. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Just, okay.
Yes, Foster.
Just, is there gonna be a mechanism, like, because what it comes to my mind is that there are very few people in this room right now being made aware of this. And I think it's really important for parents and guardians to be made aware of what we're doing and what is being done. And in particular, with the suicide prevention, signs of suicide, I think that is something that, you know, really needs to be put out, especially to, to parents and guardians, so that they're aware this is here, but also that they can be a part in looking into signs that they may see, not only their own children, but some of the children that they are affiliating and associating with, their friends.
Yeah, there have been some efforts in that respect. I know, Ally, I don't know if that has happened yet at the high school, I believe it had some programming related to suicide prevention and messages that went out from Principal Johnson to the families. I don't know if, it wasn't, it was on Friday? Okay, I wasn't sure if it had happened already, but maybe during your report if you want to share anything from that, or you may have it on there, she has it on there. Leave it to Ally Shambrello, she's got it covered. So she'll talk about that when we get to her report, but you're right. And there's certainly more other ways that I can get that out as well. And it'll be a topic on our Combined Parent Advisory Council and other venues too, okay?
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to board subcommittee reports, Ally.
As Mr. LaPage mentioned, we did have an assembly on Friday about depression and the signs and really the resources we have at PHS to help anyone suffering from depression. And then we just came back from our three-day weekend from Columbus Day and next, not next week, the week after is the homecoming game on October 25th with the dance the following day, which is always a very exciting time here. And tomorrow, the freshmen, sophomores and juniors will be taking the PSAT and the seniors will hopefully be doing college stuff, preparing the Common App, taking some tours, which is a perfect day, because we don't have to take the PSATs. And tonight, the volleyball team had their Dig Pink game in support of breast cancer awareness. They had raffle baskets, which were very nice, they had different themes to them, they all wear their Dig Pink shirts. And tomorrow, the cross-country team will have their CCC meet at Wickham Park, which is our second time going there and our last time before state's, the day of homecoming. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. Next, we have facilities, Mrs. Terrell.
There was no meeting of the facilities committee.
And you also have the policy subcommittee.
There was no meeting of the policy committee either.
All right, moving on to Mrs., Ms. Peterson, finance subcommittee.
Nothing to report.
Okay, and next we have the advocacy update.
Well, we could, we could say that the KCAPS conference is coming up in, I think it's November 15th and 16th?
Yes.
Several folks registered, so.
Okay, turf committee report. Mr. LaPage.
No, there's no turf committee report. I did have a couple of other quick topics to conclude my superintendent's report, I'll, I'll sneak them in now, if that's all right. I just wanted to, I've sent out a lot of emails about mosquitoes and triple E virus and, you know, West Nile's still out there as well. I just wanted to follow up with the board, just so that the board and any public who are, you know, who watch the meetings on Nutmeg are aware, I communicated on a daily basis with Shane Lockwood, who's our Plainville-Southampton Health Director regarding any mosquito threat. And I know you saw my detailed messages that I sent out to, to families on a regular basis. I also communicated with Chris Farrell and with all the youth sports groups on a regular basis to make sure that we're all on the same page. I followed the Health Director's guidance on that. I'm not a, I'm not a health official. If he said, you know, we advise that you stop activities at 5:30, I would've done so. I'm not in a position to make that decision, just like I don't, I don't make the weather forecast, I rely on someone to do that as well. So that's how we, and I spoke with Tim Canelon from Southington and the West Hartford Superintendent and Farmington Superintendent as well, so we communicated and that's how those decisions are made. And so we never ended up altering our, our times. What I did, continue to push at the recommendation of the Health Director is use of preventative, you know, personal preventative, you know, measures, you know, long sleeves and whenever you can and, you know, the sprays and, and other, and other measures. So I just wanted to follow up on that. I also wanted to mention that we will be having that Combined Parent Advisory Council, I'm looking forward to sending out that invitation with representatives from the, from across the district to work on district-wide communication and sharing of our, our vision as a Board of Education and administrative group and also hearing from them about how we can support the groups such as Project Graduation, Athletic Backers and all the parent advisory and PTO groups from the town. And hopefully looking for a diverse group of, of people to be involved with that. We will be holding a 5K Thanks For Giving run and a turkey trot, Kids One Mile Fun Run that's planned at MSP on November 9th at 9:30. You can register online at the middle school website or on the athletics website, I'll be running in it, well, I should say jogging in it. I don't really run, I move at a pretty slow pace, but I'm a big guy, so it takes a little time, but I do my best. Mr. Guarino will be dressed as a turkey and I think he's gonna try to run it too, but we'll see. Right, Mr. Guarino, you're, you're committed to that?
I'm a little.
So the reason I bring this, the reason I bring this up is I know that the board had a really difficult decision to make some reductions to the, to budget last year. And, you know, it was a lean budget and based on the charter, you know, the town council had to recommend some, some reductions and reductions were made. And unfortunately, spring sports was one that we, we decided to make and hoping that some funds or realized savings would, would help out. You know, there has been, there have been some possible opportunities from, from the town side and from the board side with lines coming in or, or additional monies coming in, but when you look at the other side of that, we also had an unexpected additional kindergarten teacher I had to hire in August, because our class sizes went through the roof. So we have to do what's best in the classroom for kids and, and use the funds that are, are supplied to us, that are allotted to us. And then, you know, Chris Farrell and I and Mr. Guarino met with a mighty, small but mighty group of parents and they've done an incredible job of planning, you know, this event, it's, it's gonna be a lot of fun, you'll see these around town and online, but, so the signup, the signup is online and I encourage everybody to get involved in, in supporting efforts to bring back spring sports, because it is really important. And I know all of you support sports and it was a very, very, very difficult decision and not one you wanted to make. So I believe we're gonna be able to bring sports back with some effort, shared effort, combined effort between, you know, the town and the board and, and parent groups. I'm looking forward to supporting that any way we can. So I just wanted to mention that. And I guess I will be in the dunk tank at the Homecoming Carnival, I agreed, Lexi Charbonneau asked me to do it and I couldn't say no to her. So if you want to dunk me, then come on out and dunk me, it's gonna be cold. It'll be a long line, I think. It's Homecoming, when's Homecoming, Ally?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, that's right.
And when does that start?
Oh, boy, they're lining up. Maybe this should be the fun, another fundraiser for, all right, that's all I have, sorry for the, the late submission, I just wanted to. I talked all about safety and security, but I had a few less, well, somewhat less heavy topics, except for triple E. Thank you.
Moving on to Foster, Plainville High School report.
Yeah, the PAC had its last meeting on September 11th. Their president is Karen Lyman, the vice president is Christine Wells, secretary is Lisa Levesque and treasurer is Julie Vine. And they have a treasury right now of $2,078. They're trying to set some goals and doing that, they are in the midst of their Lyman Pie fundraiser right now and their next meeting is going to be on November 13th.
So you will be having the fundraiser for the Lyman Pies again and we can?
No, actually, they, they got that out already and they, they never sent that out in the subway where we're gonna have to kind of die officially.
Oh, no, Foster, this is not good. Okay. Next, Ms. Laurie Consalvo with Teflon.
The PTO had a very successful fall fair and the teachers and staff offered fun experience raffle prizes. There was some pretty intense bidding on movie dates, pizza parties, crafts and ice cream outings and other fun times with the teachers. and ice cream outings, and other fun times with the teachers and staff. The PTO planned this year's activities, including winter fair, sweetheart bingo, and other activities for the students, and Mrs. LaPage shared information about the upcoming Veterans' Day celebration, tiger time at Taflon, and the annual cardboard challenge, and that's all.
Thank you. Middle school, Krista.
The, the MSP PTC met on Tuesday, October 8th, they had a very successful and osb fun family bingo night on September 25th. Coming up on November 13th, they're going to have a paint night, and that sounds like a lot of fun, I think it's $15, and they'll be painting with Mrs. Meehan, one of the art teachers at MSP, so that'll be a great night. And again, I was going to mention the Thanks For Giving 5K and Turkey Trot also, that's Saturday, November 9th at 9:30, and I think that's it.
Thank you. Nicole Wheeler.
All right, Wheeler's off to a great start, with roughly 70% of the school renovated to new, and 90% of the teachers are in their permanent rooms, the school is beautiful, and they all appreciate the boards and the building committee's support. The Wheeler's Annual Trunk or Treat, this event involves parents and kids decorating their family's car in a Halloween theme, and students walk around and trick-or-treat for candy at all the cars. This will be on October 18th from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., and their next PTO meeting is October 24th.
Thank you. We need to go back to Lori Consalvo, she has something.
Sorry, I just wanted to announce that Taflon is calling all vendors, if you sell a product or know somebody that does, they're going to be holding a vendor fair as part of their Taflon holiday celebration on December 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., they're going to take Taflon parents first, and only one vendor of each product, so first come, first served, so far they have pampered chef, the cost is $20 for a table, plus a prize to use as an auction item, you can contact the Taflon PTO at plainvilleschools.org if you're interested, and they're going to be sending out more info to come, so if you know anyone that sells any type of pampered chef type of home business, they can rent a table for $20, and that's all.
Thank you. Becky, correct council report.
I was unable to attend the September correct council meeting.
Okay, next is the chairperson's report. Saturday, October 12th, the students from the high school helped load the trailers from Zarella's Farm to drop the pumpkins off for the gutting of the pumpkin fest that's coming up soon, and they will also be there helping during the course of the pumpkin fest, so we appreciate all that help that they have given to us, and are going to continue to give us till the event is done, we thank you for that. Let me see, the safety and security plan, Steve Winover, field experience program, 10 students ready for internship, applications waiting for approval from the state, correct?
Yeah, the field work experience program is really starting to boom, several real-life job exposures and field experience have been set up thanks to the work of Lynn Davis, and Sue Bradley, and Rosa Perez, and, did I miss anybody, Rosa?
Yes, this was a course that we approved back in May.
Right.
But in order to run the program, because it's run by the Department of Labor, it's approved by the Department of Labor, we put in the application, but we're waiting for them to give us the final blessing. In the meantime, we have continued to recruit the students, advertise, Lynn is to getting more businesses to come and board, so we're waiting for the final blessing, but it's not always not to do the work that we do.
Well, you did what you had to do, and waiting is the process of, eventually.
It's a great program, very meaningful for the kids.
Thank you, and that's all that I really have, chairperson's report, and next unfinished business? No unfinished business, okay. New business, open, board open forum, board members?
Just one thing, I would like to, just on that November 9th event, that people should not be thinking that they have been elite runners to be in the 5K or the Turkey Trot, so that if you want it, and even, you know, I think this is one of the ways we can ensure that we can have, I think it's essential we have spring sports at the middle school, and one way I think we can do that is just individuals, even if you're busy that day, if you just sign up either for the Turkey Trot or the, or the 5K, it'll be a way to just ensure that we get this done, and I think that's something we all can do. And as far as seeing the superintendent in the dunk tank, I can hearken back to the days when he was duct taped to that wall over there, when he was principal in the high school, it just really shows what a real good sport this gentleman is, and how lucky we already have.
Thanks, Foster.
Can we do that again, too?
What?
So, I'll just, I'll just add that Foster's statement about not being an elite athlete is absolutely positive, is absolutely true, because I registered, so there we go, right there, and, and I will walk, because it does say you could do that, but it did, I do have to say this, when you go on there and register, it doesn't ask you for money there, so, you get to do it.
No, you have to set this up right.
Okay, all right, I was hoping that that wasn't a glitch, okay, all right, anyway, yeah, that wasn't part of what I was going to say, but when Foster said that, I had to laugh, I'm like, yeah, definitely not for the elite athlete. So, I just had a couple of things I wanted to say, first of all, unfortunately, Ms. LaPage has left us, she's left the building, but I can't help but, you know, think about how, how, how much, how highly we regard her as a leader of Taflon School, leader in the district, I met a parent last night who, his children go to Wheeler, and she knows Wheeler, but somehow or another she knew Lynn, she had gone to the school for something, and she said, "Such an authentic person," and that's the word when, when people talk about Lynn often, that's the word that comes to mind, authentic, she's been the principal there for, it's got to be about 20 years, I think she's, yeah, because I remember being the president of PTO when she got hired, and I was not on the board at the time, so, you know, it was, she's, she's just been such an asset to not only Taflon, but to the, to the community as well, so I'll tell her later, I think she knows how I feel about her anyway, but, but I just had to say that. Also, I wanted to extend my thanks to Lori Consalvo for her service on the Board of Education, we know this is her, her last meeting, and congratulations, or best wishes, I guess I should say, to everyone else who's running that we have here, fortunately, I'm in the middle of my term, so I'm not having to deal with elections this time around, but I would say this, I often have people say, "Oh, I don't have kids in the school, I don't vote for the school board," but I'm telling you, if you are concerned about the value of your home, or the kind of community you live in, you should be voting for the school board. This, this group really affects greatly the kind of school system that we have, the kind of administrators and teachers we attract, and we really need to have people understand the importance of having a good, solid school board, so I encourage people to get out and vote on November 5th, and certainly to vote for the school district as well as council, and what have we got, constables and other things like that, library board too.
I have a couple of things that I wanted to say, I also signed up for the 5K, and is definitely a donation, because I will not be running, but I'll be there to cheer everyone on who wants to run, or who is running. I wanted to also thank Lori Consalvo for her, for her time on the board, we will miss you, and I have actually been taking a rad self-defense class given by the Plainville Police Department, it's free, it's a self-defense class for women, and they try to do it three or four times a year, and I would encourage, it's for all ages, I would encourage every woman to take it, I missed tonight's class because I was here, but it, it has been a fantastic experience, and I think it's awesome that our, our Plainville Police Department does it for free.
Detective Rodriguez?
Uh, no, it's actually Officer Martins, so she's there, and Sergeant Quilter, so it's, it's really a great experience, I would really encourage all women to take it, and also, I got to do my first set of rounds last week, to go around and see the teachers, and it was a really great experience, our teachers are really awesome, and our kids are great, and you can always learn something from listening to kids, there was a fifth grader who said, raised her hand and said, "Sometimes I make things more complicated than they need to be," and I was like, "I identify with that," so, it was, it was really a great experience, so thank you for that. That's all.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to everyone for allowing me to be on the board this past year, it's opened a lot of doors for me, and I guess we'll see what happens in the future, you never know, I might be back, so, thanks again.
Anybody else? I'd just like to say thank you to Lori for the time that she spent on the board with us, we appreciate all that you did for us, and we hope to see you again, thank you. Okay, moving on, Joan, can I do the, the quarterly special education report, all in one group? Joan?
I.
No? Okay. Okay, may I have a motion to approve, say, request approval of the child nutrition program?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, down here.
We should have done quarterly special ed.
Oh, we did, I missed Sam. Sam, did you have anything, I'm sorry?
Yeah, so we just briefly, once a quarter, we just look at the cost of special education tuition and, and report on that, and it's early in the year, but right now there's nothing alarming to report, in fact, we're trending favorably to budget and to last year, however, there are potentially students in district that could be outplaced, and the potential for hiring additional staff to handle keeping students in district, so it's still in flux, as it usually is this time of year, Vicky and her staff are closely monitoring it and, and managing it, and there's more to report later in the year, so for right now, we're on track.
Thank you. Okay, so now can I go to request approval of the child nutrition program?
Request approval of collective bargaining agreement, education, oh wait, sorry, D or C?
I think you already did.
D, yeah, okay, so the request of the approval of collective bargaining agreement, Education Association of Plainville.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
Just, just a comment.
Comment, discussion?
If your mic's up.
Pardon?
Thank you, mic's up.
Thank you. Myself, Ms. Paul Mary, and Ms. Hardy, and, is that it? Is it just the three of us? Served on the committee with, with some administrators, and we did, I think, I think that we came to an agreement that was good for, good for everybody, both sides, everyone seemed to be pretty happy, we didn't have to spend a ton of money on lawyers, because we didn't have a lot of disagreements, so, we really did work well together and come, come to a good conclusion, and hope that the rest of the community agrees with us in that regard.
Thank you.
Have the teachers accepted that?
Yes.
Just yesterday.
Yeah, the, the educators association, Plainville, has ratified the contract, as has the custodians, those are the two that are on, there's one that has not yet, that'll be next.
Okay, moving on to C, may I have a motion to approve the request of the approval for the collective bargaining agreement?
Motion to approve collective bargaining agreement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And moving down to F, request approval, may I have a motion to request approval of the collective bargaining unit for F's me?
Did we just, we just?
Did, do, no, we did the one above it, we did E, we have?
We did.
Oh, okay, I apologize, all right. Next on to the consent agenda, motion to, may I have a motion to approve the, the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No questions, no concerns?
Motion to adjourn.
In favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody, have a good evening.